I'd like to call to order the July meeting of the Monroe County Public Library Board of Trustees. To begin the evening, we'll go around and introduce ourselves and share something we're reading if we wish. So we will start with Kathy.
Hi, I'm Kathy Loser, and I'm reading, I just picked up the book, The Invisible Life of Addie LaRue by Schwab.
I'm Jamie Burkhart, and I'm reading a YA book called The Gilded Ones, or Gilded Ones.
I'm David Ferguson. I'm reading a book called The Burning.
I'm Chris Harrison, and I'm reading If Life Gives You Lemons, Make Peach Pie. I can't remember who the author is, though.
I'm Greer Carson. I'm reading A Mammal's Notebook: The Selected Writings of the Incomparable Composer Eric Satie.
Hi, I'm Fred Reissinger, and I just finished a biography of George Washington, and very interesting. It did a lot of things that I didn't know about.
First item on the agenda is the consent agenda items. So do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 16, 2021 board meeting, the monthly financial report, the monthly bills for payment, the personnel report, and the 2021 board meeting calendar?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion or questions about these items? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda items signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. Moving on, next we have Greer Carson to give us the monthly director's report.
So just pull out a few highlights from this month. A big one is really the services that we're continuing to put back in place and our move to return to something like normalcy. Library visits continue to increase steadily, with June seeing the most patrons return to the library since we reopened our doors back in February of this year. We've actually gone from about 20% of our daily foot traffic to now about 50%, which is fantastic. Physical collection use is also steadily climbing back up. We're now at about 2/3 of pre-pandemic average use of the physical collections. This has helped in no small part by returning the same-day check-in through our automatic material handlers, so we're no longer quarantining materials. And our digital collection use, though, it's seen a slight decrease since we've resumed our services. Overall, it remains significantly higher than at pre-pandemic levels. So what we had hoped to see, in part as a result of the pandemic, more people interacting with our digital collections and sort of adopting that form of using the library as a norm, is so far proving to be the case. Our summer reading challenge is seeing strong participation so far. Over 1,200 children are enrolled, over 200 teens, and over 450 adults. And a big thing, vital tutoring rooms reopen this past month. Bethany will speak a little bit to that here later this evening. And then, though it's not in this month's report, Level Up and our two teen spaces, ground floor here at Main and the teen space out of Ellisville reopen on Monday, July 5, and we'll share some details and anecdotes about how that's been going. But it's fantastic to see teens back in the library, and it reminds us of how different a space it can be when we have adolescents here. So we're very excited about that.
Are there any questions for Greer?
I'd be interested to talk about the circulation for digital as the weather changes. You know, and looking at that trend, I wonder if people can get out and about, and time is just different. Once school starts and kicks back up, I would like to hear maybe in a couple months what it looks like.
Absolutely. We do tend to see a dip in digital collection use sometime around the summer months, and I don't know if there's correlation there or not, but that would be something for us to look at, definitely.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, the question that a lot of libraries have, and we talked to other libraries at the start of pandemic, is, you know, for some populations of library users, what's holding them back from interacting with digital collections? In some cases, it's format, and that's fine. In other cases, it's just familiarity, and there's no real reason to download an ebook or stream a video when you can go in the library and get a physical copy. And so there was some speculation early on that something like a pandemic would lead to people, you know, basically figuring out how to use the library through the internet. And so we can't say decidedly whether or not that's the case, but there's a strong indication that we're seeing more of that with our own users. So we're definitely going to be watching that.
Great, thanks.
Anything else for Greer? Okay, then, moving on, the next item is old business, and this would also be an update from Greer on the continuous improvement process.
So back in May, we shared with you all a little bit of what continuous improvement is, what led to our decision to do effectively an internal review of a lot of our operations, our best practices and norms, and some details on what we're taking a look at staff-wide. So again, this is a review of our cultures, norms, best practices, some aspects of our organizational structure itself. It's a unique process in that it began with staff conversations and has been conducted internally and with the involvement of all library staff. It does involve a structured series of discussions, outreach, and research, and a conscious reflection on who we are and, more importantly, who we want to be. So we're approaching some important milestones in the coming weeks. The eight teams are preparing their proposals for implementation, and we'll bring those proposals to the leadership team throughout the months of August and September. We will have ongoing feedback and discussions about, you know, whether or not we want to adopt these proposals outright or modify them and adopt some version of them or what have you. But the result is going to be, by the end of September, we'll have a really good sense as to what some of these changes are going to be. And then we're going to come back to you all in probably November and share kind of a final summary of the continuous improvement process and what some of those specific changes are going to be and what our desired outcomes are. So this is just a quick update that we're heading into the biggest part of continuous improvement over the next couple of months. We're all very excited. This has been an incredible team-building process for staff and something that most of us have never really gone through before. It's a lot of hard work, there's a lot of involvement, but most importantly, there's a lot of enthusiasm, and it's brought staff together in a really unique way. So we're very excited about it, despite being a little tired.
Any questions for Greer on the continuous improvement process? Well, the board would like to express their thanks to you and your team for all the hard work you're putting into this process right now.
Absolutely.
Moving on, next we move into new business, and right now we have an update from Gary Lutler on the 2022 budget.
The first six months of 2021 and most of last year have certainly not been typical operating months for the library in terms of services provided and operating cost. Reduced services and hours have resulted in reduced costs for wages and other operating expenses. After the June property tax payment to the library was deposited, the operating surplus after six months is nearly $2 million. A year ago, the operating surplus for the first half of 2020 was about $1 million. So we've gone from halfway through the year, a $1 million surplus, to $2 million, and that's just a reflection of the changes we've gone through over the past year and their impact on cost. The current $2 million surplus puts the library in a good financial position as we go into the construction bidding phase for the new Southwest branch project. We're pretty confident in the cost estimates we have for the branch construction, but it's good to be in a position to handle unexpected surprises. So a look at the spending budget that we have up here. The total library spending budget for 2022 is about $12.3 million. So that would be the... The increase from the 2021 spending budget is about 4.3%, which is the 2022 growth quotient. So our spending cannot go above last year's spending by more than 4.3%. The library's total budget can increase by up to 4.3%. If we go over that, then that puts us in a position where the county council would then do the binding review, and they would have to prove it. So we always stay under the growth quotient or at the growth quotient. Just looking at the operating fund portion of the budget, the increase over last year's budget is about 7%. That's a higher increase than normal, and it's because of the cost estimates that are related to the new branch construction and preparations for opening. We have estimated costs built into this budget for that. Approximately, what we've put in here is approximately $250,000 for additional wages and $100,000 for additional costs related to supplies and maintenance contracts. So now we will take a look at the revenue side of the budget. The revenue from property taxes will increase by the amount of the 2022 growth quotient, which is 4.3%, relatively high for... It ran at the 2.6 to 2.7 range for quite a while before it started going up, and it's just staying up. Revenue from local income taxes in 2022 is estimated to be at $2.8 million. The total revenue budget, including the debt fund revenue for 2022, is a little over $11 So here's a look at the estimate for the branch project, a little over $12 million. And so in the last six months of this year, we'll go through the bidding process and start into the construction process. And so this schedule here is a look at the funds we've accumulated so far and our projections for what we're going to have available to pay the project cost. Kind of looking at the, starting at the bottom, we are in good shape. We have about $1.3 million of cushion. We have... And part of the reason we have that is because the, kind of moving up the schedule, but the 2021 operating surplus estimate at this point is $1.7 million. And that was probably the biggest change in this schedule is just the fact that we're likely to have a very high surplus for this year. So this is a look out to 2027 with estimates for branch operation costs. And so I guess the point of this, well, six years from now, we will have paid off the $2 million general obligation bond that we're issuing in this round. And so in 2027, we're certainly going to renew that bond, at least. And by then, we could have additional capacity to make bond payments. As assessed value in Monroe County grows, so does library revenue if the tax rate stays at about the 10-cent guideline. The additional capacity to make bond payments six years from now will be taken into consideration as we gather community input and prepare the next version of the library's strategic That's about all I have. I'd open it up for any areas of the budget that anyone would like to talk about or any questions. What's the reason for the large increase in the local income tax? Ah, because at the time we did the first draft of the budget last year, or the advertised draft, August, we were still getting an estimate or the message to estimate low on local income tax so that you don't get a bad surprise. It was all related to the pandemic. People are going to stop buying stuff, and you're not going to get low. It didn't happen. And our local income tax for 2020 was, the actual was quite a bit higher than what we had on that budget of $2.2 million. It was more like $2.4 or $2.4, but it was higher, the actual. So the increase looks like a huge increase, but it's not as big as it looks.
Any other questions for Gary?
All right. Well, thank you, Gary, for all your work on the budget.
You're welcome.
Okay, next, about a year ago, when we were in the midst of the pandemic, we basically passed a resolution that allowed John Walsh, the president, to sign all documents instead of all of us going around and passing that. And that document has now expired, and so we are recommending to extend the document, the ability for John to, John or the person who is running the meeting, to go ahead and sign the, any documents that need to be signed for the board on behalf of the board. So there's a resolution for board signatures on approved documents up for consideration. Do we have a motion to approve this document and extend it till December of 2021?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Do you have a question before we vote?
Okay.
Is this just ongoing, then? It won't have an expiration?
No, it'll expire, this one will expire. We just hadn't put in there the expiration date, so it'll expire in December of 2021 if we approve it for six more months. Or we could have the option of approving it for longer if we so wish as a board.
So what's, refresh me on the rationalization for extending it to December 2021?
Because right now with the pandemic going on, we don't know how, you know, what the...
In case we would be...
How, what trajectory it's going to take, so...
So should we...
But we also have the option to not approve it as well.
When we vote, should we use the language of the December date?
Yes.
Since it isn't what is written here?
Yes.
We have a resolution. We have a version.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the resolution for board signatures on approved documents signify by saying aye.
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 Oh, approving it till December 2021, should have said that.
Yeah, thanks.
As written, okay.
Yeah, as written, December.
And all those opposed signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. And next, we have an update from Christine Mathau on the Southwest branch construction, and then after that, we will approve the, or actually, we'll go ahead, I'm sorry, make a motion to approve the advertisement for bidding. So do I have someone to make a motion for the approval for advertisement for bidding on the new Southwest branch?
So moved. Second.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. We are very excited because this represents the completion of the construction documents phase for the new Southwest branch library. We have been working extremely hard, as you can imagine, on this wonderful project. And I thought what I would do, most of you have seen the documents, they were uploaded and sent off to you, and as you can imagine, it's about 125, how many pages? It's about 125 or 150 sheets of drawings, so I thought maybe better not to go through each drawing with you. But what I thought I would do is just tell you a little bit about what we've been doing since we last met with you. And we have a large team of consultants we've been working with over the last few months, including Bloodsoe, Rigger, Cooper, James, who are the site civil engineers here in Bloomington, Lynch, Harrison, and Brumlevy, they're the structural engineers up in Indianapolis. Circle Design Group is the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineers out of Indy. Blundall Associates has been doing the cost estimating for us on the project. We have a new team member, Jenny Elshammy, who has been working with us on the signage for the project, and I'll show you some of that this evening. RTM Consultants has been doing all the code and fire protection research that we need on the project, and Jim Bradley, who is a local architect, has been working with us on specifications. So we've all been working very hard on the project. We have right here an image of what you will see on the site along Gordon Pike. The roadbed that you see right here is Gordon Pike. As you go up that road, you will go to the new roundabout. You will turn right towards Bachelor Middle School, and you'll peel off to the right, and you'll enter onto this site. The site, as most of you have been there, it's a slope site, so we've been able to pick up that lower level. And you can see where the staircase goes up on the south elevation, and you can see where we have as an alternate for the project on the slope site to the east. You can see where an amphitheater will go and a labyrinth at the center of that amphitheater if, you know, if the dollars are there. Otherwise, it can be done at a later date. We've designed it in such a way that it can happen at a later date. Okay, the, okay. What we've been doing, we have throughout this, I'm not going to go through all of this, but all the team members have been working very hard. We, in the architecture end of it, we've been doing a lot of the construction detailing, a lot of finally picking out all the final interior finishes for the project. We've been working on signage, trying to coordinate, make sure all the structure. Chris has been with our structural engineer daily, dealing with all the structural detailing so that all of the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and architectural ties back together in a really comfortable, coordinated way. Site Civil, Bill Rigger's group has been working very hard with the county. I don't know how much you know about this, but the storm water requirements have intensified for this site, so we have been working with the county on that issue. And Bill's group has now recommended that there be a retention pond at the east end of the building. If you keep going down, hmm, let me go back. How did I get that? Just, who knows? On the east end of the site, there'll be a retention pond, and this is hopefully going to mitigate the water runoff on the site. It'll actually collect more water and store more water than is currently being held back on the site. Okay.
Is that retention pond parallel to the possibility of the little outdoor theater and labyrinth?
It's further east of that.
Okay.
In fact, if you're coming up Gordon Avenue, Gordon Pike, it will be on your right, and then what you'll see is the amphitheater area, and then that rises up, and then you go into the building, and then you go up to the main level. So it's a tiered situation. There's a water retention area already in that general area, so this is...
So how far is that pond from the street?
That's a good question. I'm not sure. It's on the, it's on the property. It's on this parcel. This, as you know, is a five-acre parcel, and it, there are certain setback requirements that we have to follow, so it's within that setback requirement. Does that answer the question as best I can at this point?
Yes.
Okay, great, okay.
It looks like it's really on the, might be closer to the road than what might be, I guess. I don't know.
Is it, I don't think it's on that, are you looking at the...
I'm looking at...
Let me go back.
I forget what page it is.
If I'm looking at this, let me point out to you a little bit.
If you come out the door of the library, there's a walkway that goes all the way around. That's going to be part of the base bid for the project. That will be in the project no matter what. Then below that, this is where the tier comes down in a natural slope, which we're going to take advantage of that and put in the tiered limestone amphitheater tiers. And following that, there is a field, there's a meadow that's further past that, and the retention pond is just beyond that.
Okay.
So if it's a concern that this would become subject to water from the retention pond, that should not be an issue because the grade continues to slope down to the east. So, does that make sense?
Uh huh.
Great.
Okay. Mechanical, as mentioned before, mechanical, electrical, plumbing have been finishing. We've been working with the library to make sure we've got all the sinks, the proper sinks, you know, what's going to be going into the sinks. They've got to make sure that we're addressing all of the requirements by the county for any kind of substances that you put in the sink, what type of traps are there, all of that sort of thing. Also, we did have a lighting review, a major lighting review with the library, and so they have a chance, they've had a chance, the building committee had a chance to look at all of the lighting throughout the space and make a couple of changes as we saw fit. we saw fit. And the building signage, as I said, Jenny El Shammy has been working with us on that. And I will go on to that. Landscape plan, site landscape plan as it stands now is here, and I'm going to point out the things that you've been describing.
So this is actually a better site plan because this one, the building is cut in half and it's been reduced. But if you look at, this is the driveway coming in to the building area. There will be a sign right here to basically, you can see coming this direction and coming from this direction will take you in. Lighting will serve to light the roadway along with trees that are being required by the county. There's a rather substantial amount of landscaping that is required by the county. So all of that is part of the site plan that you see here. Parking area is here with the assumption that someone would come in and travel this way, and you could be dropped off right in this area in front of the building. There is a bicycle and scooter track right over here, so you can enter and park your bicycle or your scooter there. This is a canopy, a covering, as you probably saw in the elevations. But you find you walk here, and the entrance into the building is right here, the main entrance. And that's what you see from Gordon Pike. If however you would like to park your car underground, you can basically go down the driveway here and enter the parking garage at this location. And in the parking garage, there is a wall which will identify where you enter into the building, or you can go out into the garden area from that point. And this is the amphitheater we've talked about, which is an alternate, and this is where the labyrinth would take place, or in this area right there.
Floor plans you know, you know well, but I'll just, if anybody wants me to walk through, I can do that. I'm sure you know them very well. But this is the main floor plan for the building. Should I walk it, walk people through, or should I walk through so you know what's going on, or do you feel comfortable with it as? I'll walk it, I'll walk everybody through. Okay.
So as I said, when you were in the parking lot, you would get out of your car here or get off your bicycle or your scooter, and you'd walk under a covered canopy right here, and you'd come through the front door at this location. There is the main lobby through here. There will be books along the back wall, along with some seating and new materials in this area. The public service area is right here. If you have come up from downstairs, if you're in the garage, you'd be coming up from downstairs and up these tiered study areas through here. And the elevator, or you can come up to the elevator from downstairs. This area here is all the public computing area. There's also immediately next to it, a large conference room right here. And there's a quiet reading room in this area. And it has a glass wall through here from floor to ceiling. This space is quite tall, so it'd be actually a feeling like this space is continuing into the quiet reading area. This area up here is where the adult collections are. All the book shelving is there with a seating, reading area along here. Children's is running across the top on the north, and there's a children's program room up there. That whole area, as you saw, this whole area is going above ground by a full floor by the time you're here. So you are up in the trees at that point, especially in the children's area because you're facing north towards the forest that's there. And this area, you get more views out because the grades continue to slope down. So if you're coming for, let's say, a special program, you can come through and walk down the corridor here, or you can come around. At night, if you close off the rest of the library with a gate here and doors here, this whole area is accessible for meetings, but people are not free to wander through the collections area. Okay, so when you go through here, the administration is over here. There's a book drop-off here and here, an outdoor location and an indoor location. And there's an administrative office here, the staff has an open work area here, materials processing is here. As you walk through here, there's windows all the way along both sides, very open. There is an all-ages collaborative area over here where you might do 3D printing, or you might get together with people, start a new business, whatever. There's a teaching kitchen here. And up in this area is the teen center. There's a little vending area out here, water fountains. There's a family unisex restroom right there. Staff lounge is up there with its own restroom. Janitorial services up here. Over here are two program rooms which can be separated or joined together with a movable wall. And there's a generous reception area outside of that, so that there's a spill-out. People aren't spilling into the collections area, they're spilling into an area where there might be an opportunity for reception. And such is the reason for the teaching kitchens here. You might serve food from that location. Restrooms are here, two study rooms are here.
The lower level, the lower level includes, as you enter from the north, as you saw from the driveway, you can...
Driving here, there is, this is the access, if you come in up the stairs, you come in these doors and go through a vestibule and into that tiered study stair area here. Or if you want access by elevator, you come in through here into an elevator lobby and come up at that location. But when you get upstairs, the stairs and the elevator both land at the same place, and you're right next to the lobby. That was the goal, was to make sure that you landed at the same place. There are ADA accessible parking spaces right here. There is library storage here, along with mechanical room, maintenance office, there's an IT room, and the electrical room over there. And the boiler room is going to be located over there in that corner. We have in this area also some additional storage areas, one here and one here. And this area is the elevator machine room.
These are the, and you can see this primarily from the 3D view we saw earlier, but just to show you, the upper drawing is the south elevation, the main elevation that you will see along Gordon Pike. And the elevation that you see below is basically, it's just what's called a true elevation. Because of the angle, where there are two elevations on this sheet. Okay. Okay. The drawing on the top is the, the big band that you see there is the children's area, and that looks out over the woods. And then you can see where the garage door is entering into the garage. The drawing on the bottom is what you would see from the east side of the building where you get the double-height area. And you can see the openings on the bottom are...
These are into the garage, and they're just grills. Basically, it's the way that we're getting ventilation at the garage. We have a certain amount of free area that we're required to have for ventilation, so that's what those areas are. And this is the entrance from the lower level.
Okay. This is Chris's roof. That's the view you'd see if you were on the flat-roof area up here. Okay. And then on the bottom is the, is what you'd see coming in from the west. Okay. Okay. Here are some of the interior views based on the plans you just saw. We're going to look at the atrium study stair. That's the big stair that comes up from the lower level. And again, you can see the elevator at the top of the stairs over here.
So that when you come up from the garage, you land at the elevator, and that's right next to the lobby.
There's a, the glass that is along here, we did have a railing, and then in discussions with the library, it was quite clear that that might set up a situation that was not safe for children. So by putting the glass in, it actually worked out really nicely because it's much more open, and we could take it all the way down close to the floor. So it worked out really nicely. You can see through the glass towards the lobby. There will be, and then you can see, this is all the computing area right running along the glass. This is the children's area, and you can see the trees off to the left. That's where you're up in the canopy of the trees. And you can also, in that same space, if you look out towards the right, that's facing east, and that's where the adult collections areas are. So. We had some whimsical, some whimsical light fixtures that we've put in the space. The whole space is intended to connect with nature. So the finishes that we've been choosing are somewhat organic. They feel very much connected with the outdoor setting that this library is in. This is the wild and crazy teen center. Again, it has a view out to the north, towards the trees. And in addition to that, there is a small conference or a meeting room for the kids. And then there's a little bar, kind of kitchen sink area where the kids can make things for after-school, whatever. Okay. This is the teaching kitchen. We have, there'll be seating for about, oh, 15, 12 to 15 people can take a class together in that space. There'll be an overhead demonstration mirror and a couple of monitors that assist the person who is teaching the cooking class. And that door that you see straight ahead, that goes into the reception area outside the program room. So again, you have that link between those two spaces. Okay. This is the, what the bicycle-scooter shelter will look like. There'll be two different types of racks, one for scooters and one for bicycles. This is the, what the amphitheater will look like on the left, and then the labyrinth is on the right. The labyrinth is actually, they're made by a company in Virginia, and they come with all the parts, it's like putting a giant puzzle together. So it's a packaged labyrinth. So we're hoping, and it's somewhat reasonably priced, so we're hoping that will come through. Okay, signage system. Signage system is really going to help users find their way through the building, and at the same time, we don't want it to be hitting people over the head with lots of, you know, lots of text. So we've been working with, trying to think about, again, going back to nature. So the exterior sign, as you come up the drive to Bachelor, will be a pylon that's made out of like a Corten steel material. It'll look like Corten steel, it won't be actually Corten because that rusts. But it'll feel very bark-like, very tree-like. And the silver that you see is aluminum, and it will have a glow of light around that edge, and the light will actually come in behind the letters at night. And then during the day, they'll stand out on their own. Okay. And there'll be a similar sign for that that will direct you to the parking garage. Using the trees, we had, as you recall, an arborist who did a whole study on the forest of the north. Well, using the native species, we've been looking at silhouettes of trees and how those can become part of the language, the graphic language of the building. So we have been using, this one you can't, you can see it in the image on the right, on the bottom. But we will be using a translucent vinyl image that will be laid against the glass in key areas. It'll be at the teen center, collaborative area, children's area, two small study rooms, and teaching kitchen. Children's, did I get children's? Yeah. And that will direct you. It'll have these little images that run through the building, so you feel like you're still in the trees a little bit. And then large graphics for those same spaces, the key spaces, will be in a green and announce those spaces. This is, for instance, the quiet reading room. And you can't really see on this, unfortunately, but there's a tree that comes up through those triple layers of glass, and it's just this silvery frosty tree that comes up through there. Then the signage in the building, again, we're going to be picking out a leaf that is from one of the native trees. And there's one layer of hierarchy of signage that will get that. And there is a recognition wall in the lobby, and that will, again, be made out of wood, and it will rise up in one area of the lobby for names that, you know, need to go on it. And again, they'll be native species. I think right now, we're looking at walnut, cherry, and the third one is the, is the one that's difficult. If you've got any suggestions. Someone mentioned oak, but I'm not so sure. We want something that's a little bit subtle, so. In the garage. In the garage, in order for people to know exactly where to go, we plan on painting that one wall that brings you into the elevator, into the stairs, in the same greens that we have throughout the building, and two big signs that tells you exactly where to go. It actually won't say, it'll say elevator, but we've changed it from entrance, it will say stairs, so you know which way to go. Okay. Where we are now, we've just finished the construction documents phase on the project. We are hopefully receiving your approval to go to bid. We will, with your approval, start making advertisements for bids starting July 27th. They will be sent out on two different occasions, so they'll be advertised twice between July 27th and August 10th. And the bidding period starts July 28th and runs through August 31st. We will be receiving the bids, we'll have a pre-bid meeting on August 16th to answer any questions the contractors may have. We're making it mandatory so that we understand who is actually anticipating bill, bidding on the project, and so subs can understand who's going to be bidding on the project as general contractors. August 31st is the day the library receives the bids and opens the bids, and we would do at that point an analysis of the bids and make a recommendation for a successful bidder. The, on September 3rd through 8th, the beginning of September, we have to have all of that done, it's my understanding, by the end of August. But it's tied into, it's my understanding, it's tied into the whole... Yeah. Bonds, the whole bond. So August 31st is the magic, and then after that, we have September to work with the contractor-owner agreement and have a pre-construction meeting, all of those things. So we're hoping this construction will start up in September, which is a great time to start construction. And they get the foundations in and the framing up before it gets to be winter. And we would end up, right now, the magic will move in date would be October of next year. And then there'll be a timeframe, say about a month or so, when furniture will be moved in, equipment will be moved in, and basically, the library will have a chance to kind of test it out before it's totally open to the public. And that is it. Thank you so very much. It's been a great pleasure to work with you and with the whole building committee at the library. They've been absolutely super to work with. It's our favorite project, and it's been a great deal of satisfying work for us. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Christine? Well, thank you all and your team very much for all that you have done, because it looks remarkable, and I'm so excited because this is right near my house. I am looking at my chopstick, get down there and explore it, so.
Yeah. We're very excited. And these drawings actually turned out to be extremely helpful for everybody. You know, Chris and I can read drawings. We know what's going on because we've been doing this for so many years. But, you know, for most of the, most people looking at, they don't really understand it, and the library, it was great. They went forward for PR reasons to do these renderings, and it worked out very well. It's been very helpful for everybody to see what's going on. So, anyway. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Well, so at this point, all those in favor of approving the advertisement for the bidding process signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Well, the ayes have it, so we are ready to start bidding on the project. It's very exciting. It feels like now it's starting to become real. All right. Next, we have an update on community engagement from Josh Wolfe. Okay. Oh, that I guess we're going to hear about vital from Bethany Gerntine.
Kathy, I just finished Invisalign, so you have great taste. Gary, can I give you this?
Yes.
Josh, do you need it? Okay. Okay, I'll let you do it. So thanks for having me tonight. One of the things that Vital has always done really well is bringing people together. So for connection, for community, and for learning. And so when the library closed in March of 2020, we quickly had to figure out new solution, new plan for how we were going to continue to provide services. Started off with a lot of research. In April of 2020, staff looking deeply into distance learning, virtual learning opportunities, and how to be able to provide training guides for tutors and do training sessions for those who wanted to continue to participate. Like most things at Vital, these were very individualized. So depending on a volunteer's technology expertise, their student's technology access, problem-solving, different ideas for presentation, and different ideas and materials for how to make this work going forward. And I think of one of our volunteers, Sylvia, who was so passionate. She was done with quarantine, wanting to connect with her students and wanting to teach online. And so we're meeting, you know, face-to-face on Zoom, looking at all the different features of how to use the chat, and what's a breakout room, and how to share your screen. And she's just ready to tear her hair out. She's so frustrated, and she's like, Bethany, I can't do it. But she could, and she did. And starting in last November, she started meeting weekly with her student on Zoom. They've been together now for nine months, and I get wonderful monthly updates about the fun that they're having on Zoom, working on English language. And so that is very indicative of kind of how things have gone for us for the last year, is just finding these individual solutions that work for people, one person at a time. So for some folks, it's putting two copies of a book on hold so they can take their books home and read them, and then connect on Zoom. For other folks, it's doing, writing assignments by email. There's a lot of scanning involved in sending resources out that way. So it's been a lot of problem-solving and just a lot of creativity to figure out individual solutions for people. Certainly, there are barriers, and people who have chosen not to participate just for the duration of the pandemic, I'll be back when we can do this in person. But we've tried to the best of our ability to provide options for folks. So that includes sending home print packets of resources for people who want to just learn and study on their own. Earlier in the year, actually, we also opened up the tutoring rooms for individual use. So not meeting with your tutor, but if you didn't have a computer or internet, you could still come to a tutoring room and get on a Zoom session and connect with a volunteer. So the pandemic has definitely highlighted the issues of the digital divide. And so I've been really pleased to work on some of the library initiatives, like getting iPads into the circulating collection, promoting the federal broadband initiative, which promotes internet access for low-income families. So definitely more work to do, and that will be a focus going forward for us, is to continue to provide access. I think our biggest success of the year was our English language groups, which started meeting on Zoom last May. We do eight-week sessions of conversation groups. We offer about six classes every week where people can hop on Zoom. There's always a volunteer group leader, and they meet for conversation and language instruction. And they are so much fun for a community that already has kind of reduced opportunities to speak and limited chances for practice and engagement, particularly during the pandemic. They've really been a lifeline, and you can tell how grateful people are for that opportunity just to speak and communicate. And one of the fun, unexpected outcomes is that because we're doing it on Zoom, we now have national and international participation. So if a student asks to return to their home country or is traveling, it is not uncommon for someone to Zoom in at 11 o'clock at night from Japan because they didn't want to miss their class session. So those have been incredibly popular. And going forward, we're hoping to continue to offer Zoom for anyone who wants it. Guess it means you don't have to deal with parking or finding childcare. And so that's been a highlight of this time. Let's see, current status. We reopened the tutoring rooms on June 14th, and I was so tickled that one of our veteran volunteers, Byron, he's been with us as long as I've been with Vital. I've been here 10 years, he's been here longer. Every Monday morning, like quack work, he is the first one in the door, ready to meet with his student. And the very first Monday we opened, he was there. So that was very reassuring to me. It was a nice start. Since that day, that was mid-June, it's been about a month. Slowly, use of the tutoring rooms is increasing. Some people are continuing on Zoom, but we are slowly seeing people return and coming back to use that space. We're tiptoeing into programming. We started doing walking field trips in June, so meeting actually out by the bears and just using this space around Kirkwood as a forum for outdoor language groups. And are planning to return to in-person in September with the Zoom option as well. So I am so incredibly grateful to have worked with the wonderful humans of Vital for the last 16 months and seen just all of the patience and dedication people who want to continue to teach and learn during a pandemic is pretty incredible. So it was a wonderful experience for me, and I'm happy to share it with you. Do you have any questions or anything else you want to know about?
Do you think that you will continue with the Zoom modality in terms of keeping up that part of the program, or...
I think it's probably always going to be with us in some way. One of the things that works really well for us is just honoring people's preferences. So if someone needs or wants to meet on Zoom, we will honor that to the best of our capability. Yeah. And I think that for the fall session, we already, we actually have a volunteer who moved to New Jersey, but she still wants to volunteer with us. So she's going to offer her conversation group on Zoom. So I think it will be with us for the long haul.
Any other questions for Bethany?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your problem-solving and perseverance through a difficult time, for sure. Okay, next we'll hear from Josh Wolfe about community engagement.
Thank you for your time. Bethany's a hard act to follow. We've been busy in the Koku unit on the hiring and training front, so I want to talk just briefly a little bit about both. This being Monroe County, every spring we lose talented staff who head off into the world for bigger and better things. So we've had some gaps to fill these last couple of months, few months, really. More gaps than usual, actually, because we waited to fill some of our positions during the closure. We have some new librarians. Longtime children's information assistant Kate Dunhaman is now a children's services librarian for tweens, that's ages eight to 12. She's working with our children's crew to open new services in our tween space and bring tween and STEM programming back to our pre-pandemic levels. We have Stacy Terhune upstairs, who's doing adult community engagement librarianship. And she's really been awesome because she's bringing much-needed programming, adult programming, to the Elletsville community that's been, that we've been wanting out there. I was talking to her yesterday, and she's planning a fall kind of festival event for the Veterans Park right there by the branch. Maggie Hutt, former materials handler and former circulation clerk, left us and went to the Denver Public Library, which is a great system if you're familiar with it. Got some training there and an MLS, and is back and joining us now as an adult services librarian as well. And Jack Kovaleski, who was a clerk and got, left when he got his MLS, was actually a senior information assistant and has been in Juneau, Alaska, doing community engagement librarianship for two years. Has been hired and is slowly making his way back down. You can't drive down on the Alcan anymore, I just found out. He's going to have to, I think, take a boat. But he'll be here at the end of August. We have two new senior information assistants. Levi Groenwald comes to us from the Louisville Public Library, and he's filling a new hole in genealogy work and local history that was left by Brandon Rome, who is now our non-print selector. So Levi is working very closely with Christine Friesel. We also have Brett Hoffman, who's filling a gap in teen and digital creativity as a senior information assistant. And he comes to us from managing positions at Crestmont Boys and Girls Club and over there on Third Street, too. So, and he records his own music. So he's a really good fit. And we have two new IAs, Chloe Henshaw and Lauren Onderjak, who are already demonstrating an affinity for children's and teen services. So training the new staff members has been a really exciting experience. As Greer mentioned, we're doing our continuous improvement work. I'm lucky enough to be on the team that's reviewing training and onboarding. And so having so many new people to train has kind of given us a workshop to field-test new ideas. For instance, we recently pivoted to giving new staff, just, Barra Swinson gives them foundational training on the absolute bare minimum they need to know to work on the desk, and we put them out right away in shadowing positions. And by right away, I mean the first day usually, or the second day. So these kind of processes that we've been tinkering with have sort of informed some of our continuous improvement work. I do want to take a moment to remark on how interesting it is, and Bethany was talking about this very well. We had to quickly design new services during all these phases of the pandemic, train everybody on how to use them, and then in many cases, abandon them as the outside reality changed. I think when Barra did her presentation about training, she called it "training at the speed of change." And so we've gotten really good at learning things quickly and teaching one another, and then stepping back. If you look back at things like learning curbside, doing technology use by appointment with all the safety precautions in place, print-on-demand, document delivery, all these sort of things that came and went. But now, what's strange is that we're training ourselves to be normal again. And Bethany kind of alluded to that. And I know that's kind of a dangerous word to use right now, these days. But if you think about it, it's been so long reopening the teen space, reopening services for digital creativity, assisted living facilities, patrons in the jails, all of these, they are things people haven't done in a long time. So what's been interesting to watch is, and what we've found ourselves in this position where new staff are being paired up with veterans, but they're all kind of learning together to get to this, whatever this new normal is. Service-wise, we're pretty much back up to where we were at the beginning of 2020. And the patrons, as Greer sort of hinted in the, or alluded to in the director's report, if you've been visiting the library regularly, you've seen that it's getting difficult to find a parking space in the lot again. So that's a sure sign that we're starting to do better. So we're enjoying this return of patrons using our meeting rooms. That's been really amazing and brought the foot traffic in. We're looking forward in the very near future to doing onsite programming inside the building. And we're ready to make the most of the new normal, whatever it turns out to be. But thanks for your time, and if you have any questions, I'm here.
Well, thank you very much, again, for you and all your team's hard work. Now we've come to the point in our meeting for public comment. Do we have any members of the public who'd like to address the board? If so, please come to the podium and state your name and give us your comments. Anyone online?
We have none.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.